Point at hour, let me convene the City Council Meeting Committee of the Hall and ask for a roll call.
Jacobson, Panukin.
Here.
Markbar.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Oldery.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Seven.
Thank you. Okay, we have one consideration for the Committee of the Hall this evening, Freedom of Information Act FOIA policy. I'll turn to City Manager Gora.
Thank you very much, Mayor. City Attorney Dean Frieders is going to give an overview of staff's recommendation on this report.
Illinois maintains the Freedom of Information Act as a mechanism to provide the public with access to public records that are generated or maintained by public bodies. Under the act, the city obviously is a public body and we're subject to the act. Notwithstanding the city's home rule status, there is no home rule provisions in the act where we're strictly limited to compliance with the act. In looking at best management practices, we've brought forward the policy guide that's before you for four primary reasons. One is there are a number of intersecting deadlines and somewhat confusing provisions in FOIA, and this policy guide provides a resource for staff training. Two, it helps provide the public with a clear understanding of how their requests are processed by the city. Three, it provides a set of rules governing how the city will receive and process FOIA requests. And four, as I alluded to, it complies with best governance practices to set a clear expectation and standard for the city's practices. Covering some major points of the policy, if you look at the FOIA guide, it includes a flow chart that goes through all of the current provisions of FOIA. If you review that chart, you may note that an individual FOIA might actually invoke different sections of FOIA and may trigger various different timelines. A request, for example, could be voluminous and be from a recurrent requester. And those are covered in different sections of the statute, and they have different timelines and different requirements applicable. So this is generated as a flow chart that staff can go through and methodically ensure that we're complying with all of the different applicable timelines. Second, the city doesn't currently have a process in place for specifying who receives FOIA requests on behalf of the city. Under Section 3H of the FOIA statute, it expressly indicates that a public body may specify rules for the times and places that records will be made available and the persons from whom such records can be maintained. If you look at an entity such as the City of Chicago, they have 32,181 employees at present. No one would ever contemplate that any one of those 32,000 employees could, would all be subject to responding to FOIA requests. So Chicago, as do many, many communities, they specify who receives FOIA requests on their behalf to ensure that they receive them promptly, that they process them promptly, and that they process them thoroughly. That's a very standard practice, sending FOIs to a designated FOIA officer to respond on behalf of the city complies with the law, and it ensures that we're recognizing FOIs and processing them quickly. Third, the city doesn't currently have a uniform policy on how we handle charges for FOIs or for documents that are requested under FOIA. FOIA has a fee schedule that applies to requests depending on the nature of the requests. There are different schedules for recurrent requesters or for voluminous requests, for commercial requests. They also contemplate, the statute also contemplates that municipalities can either waive or reduce fees for requests that are deemed to be in the public interest, that fall within a narrow range of requests. The proposed policy here contemplates a 50% reduction in any applicable fees for such an eligible request. We've had some good inquiries regarding the policy and some of the provisions in it. One question was why would the city want to treat requests for information as FOIA requests? The answer to that question fundamentally is because we're obligated to. If a request for information falls within the definition of a FOIA request under the statute, the city's obligated to process that as a FOIA. We're obligated to ensure that we comply with the applicable statutory timelines. If someone submits a request for information that may be contained in one or more public documents, that's definitionally a FOIA request. And if we don't respond to that within the statutory timeline, we're engaging in a violation of FOIA. In the past, the city has had times when there have been informal inquiries that have been made that aren't clearly identified or perhaps aren't perceived to be FOIA requests that have later turned into FOIs. There have been other communities that have had that similar experience but that have had people after the fact say, "That was a FOIA request, you didn't comply, and now I'm going to appeal to the Attorney General." So recognizing and erring on the side of caution in processing FOIs, it allows us to ensure that we're respecting the rights of those that are requesting and complying with all the applicable statutory timelines in the law. Recognizing them as they're submitted and processing them uniformly also provides equal access to anyone who submits a FOIA and ensures that we handle those requests sequentially. It also allows the city potentially to start more carefully tracking the resources that are used to comply with FOIA requests. An additional inquiry that we've received in response to the FOIA policy is an inquiry regarding the amount of time that it takes the city to process FOIs and why it takes time. For a FOIA request that specifies a specific tangible document, for example, "I'd like to request a copy of the 2014 city budget." That's a request that can be honored almost immediately. We can identify that tangible document and turn it around and provide it or provide a link to where it is on the city's website. One of the things that's, I think, commonly misunderstood about the FOIs that the city receives, though, we often receive FOIs that are not seeking any one individual tangible document, but that rather are casting a broader net for information. Requests that are worded along the lines of "I'd like a copy of any document maintained by the city in any form that in any way relates to a given topic." So when we receive those requests, we have to ensure that we're working with all of the city's departments, identifying records they may have in a variety of forms, and producing all of those records for review. There's a significant amount of work that goes into that process, particularly when we're complying with a request that is very broadly worded. And if the city doesn't produce all of its responsive documents, it's not complying with FOIA. Ironically, sometimes the city gets criticized for overproducing or for erring on the side of caution and producing any documents that may relate to that. But that's one of the reasons why careful review of a FOIA request is so critical. So again, recognizing it as a FOIA early and going through a meaningful review process to make sure we're producing what's being asked of us. Review is also important because while the city does certainly have an obligation to provide public documents, there are some documents that the city is not permitted to release and some documents that the city is permitted to withhold for policy reasons that have been established by the state. For example, the city recently received a FOIA request for a number of documents relating to city employees. Documents that could be responsive to such a request may include employee home addresses or employee social security numbers or other individual employee information that is not subject to disclosure under the act. So in those circumstances, again, it's important to first identify the responsive documents, but then go through a careful review process to make sure that we're adhering to the city's legal obligations as an employer. Similarly, FOIA recognizes certain circumstances where the state has made a policy determination that the benefit to the public of disclosing documents is outweighed by the harm of disclosing documents. For example, FOIA would indicate that certain documents relating to an ongoing police investigation are not subject to be released to the public because it recognizes, the statute recognizes, the legislature has recognized that doing so may jeopardize that investigation or may create a public safety hazard. So we follow those regulations carefully and monitor them, and that's the reason why it's contemplated to process FOIs in this fashion. An additional question that we've received is why would the city not want to process oral requests for FOIs? The document indicates, and it's important to be clear on this point, that if someone comes in and wants to make an oral request, the staff will work with them, so we document it for them. If they're incapable of filling out a form, if they need assistance with that, if they need assistance in documenting it in some fashion, we'll work with them to make sure we get a written request, and we'll provide whatever assistance is needed to give that member of the public access to records. FOIA provides in two separate sections that a public body is not obligated to honor oral requests. The reason that we recommend always documenting the requests in writing and that the policy contemplates that is to prevent confusion. Oral requests can take on the nature of the telephone game where there's not clear understanding on the part of both parties about what is being requested and what is being provided. It can also generate significant confusion later on if there's a dispute about the documents that have been provided and what the nature or scope of the request was. So again, in documenting requests in writing, we're ensuring that we're accurately getting down to the nature of the request so we can fully comply with it and demonstrate that we're complying with the statute. The one additional question I'd received very shortly before tonight's meeting was an inquiry about the nature of the policy and why the policy is 27 pages, and doesn't that seem a little bit excessive? So I think it's important, if you have an opportunity to review the policy and look at what the contents of it are, if you print out a copy of the current Freedom of Information Act in and of itself, it's 31 pages. And that doesn't include any of the supplemental guidance or policies or decisions that have come down from the Attorney General's office or from the courts or from the state's attorney's office. FOIA is an incredibly broad and rich area of the law, there's a lot of information there. We've tried to distill that down into a useful form that will cover the vast majority of questions that arise in the policy. About the first 10 pages of that goes through and provides a checklist, a step-by-step way of going through and evaluating a request and making sure you're complying, identifying what the nature of the request is and complying with it. And the balance of it provide forms that, in the past, the city's practice has been sometimes to generate a unique response to every FOIA, even when the response is the same as responses that have been provided in the past. The idea here is, again, to promote efficiency, to allow the FOIs to be processed more rapidly to get information to the public. So we've provided sample forms that can be used and can be filled out and get that information out more rapidly. So those forms, they're a significant component of the FOIA. And again, because there are so many different circumstances, different natures of FOIA and different possible responses, they do comprise a number of pages. This is intended to be a resource for staff and a resource for the public. It's something that would be intended to be available to the public on the city's website, available to the public here at City Hall, so that if they need to understand how their request is being processed, we could work through this and explain it to them. I would say that there's a significant number of FOIA requests that the city receives on a regular basis. Certainly, the vast majority of those received by the police department that are relatively routine, relatively straightforward, and that can be resolved without need to refer to this document. But then we do receive a number, a significant number on an annual basis that are more complicated. Where reviewing this and making sure that we're properly identifying them and properly responding would be beneficial to ensure, again, best practices and complying with the law.
City Attorney Frieders, I'd like to compliment you on the presentation of the flow chart. I think it very clearly walks through a otherwise what could be an unclear, very confusing process. It walks through it in a very straightforward way, and I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into that presentation. And you may have covered early in your comments, Dean, but the electronic submission through a central source, can you help me understand the justification for that? You know, I've received, I think, I suspect other aldermen receive questions of city documents that many times I'll forward to City Manager Gora or to yourself, Dean, and we recognize that this should be a FOIA. Help me understand the reason for centralizing those requests electronically.
Sure. So one of the primary reasons is to ensure that when a request for information comes in, it's going to someone that has proper training in FOIA, can recognize it as a FOIA request, and can respond within the timelines of the statute. Another primary reason is because, for example, with regard to the FOIA at City of DeKalb, the city has an established practice in place now where we have redundancy with multiple city staffers that are checking that email address on a regular basis. And when a FOIA is submitted, initiating the response to that, getting that out to the parties that are going to have responsive documents and managing it through the process. If a FOIA is submitted to an individual city employee and they're on vacation or they're out ill or from time to time we receive emails to people that are no longer here, those may go neglected and the city may not adequately respond to them. So if you look at websites of many of our comparison communities and look at their process for FOIs, they often designate, and it's a very standard practice and for the reasons that we've outlined, a good practice to designate a central email address where those FOIA requests will be received and then have a process on the backside to make sure that we're reviewing that, taking them in and processing them properly.
And I realize we do have action on this item scheduled for our regular agenda, but at this point, I would encourage discussion, question among council members. Alderman, Snow.
Do we have any estimate of how much staff time is spent responding to FOIA requests during the year? I'm probably, maybe it's kind of hard to calculate, but just do we track of that at all?
The city has not historically tracked that. The city has not always had good records in terms of tracking even the numbers of FOIs that have been received. If you look in the backup, it's only been for the past several years that the city has started to track the numbers. As we've implemented better record-keeping in that regard and as we have staff that is more trained to be responsive to the FOIs, that is one of the things that we're looking at prospectively.
Alderman, Noriko.
Can you tell, actually, I have two questions. For training of staff, how broad-based and how comprehensive do you plan for that training to be? So that staff recognizes when they get a request or somebody says, "I, you know, I'd like to see such and such" that it is actually a FOIA request?
I think there are, it'd be fair to characterize it as saying there are three levels of training. One, we would work broad-based across the entire organization to help ensure that all employees recognize when something comes in that may be a FOIA. Even if the policy indicates that FOIs will only be received at FOIA at City of DeKalb, if someone contacts a member of our staff in good faith and asks for information, we would try and work with that requester and get the request forwarded to the FOIA officer. So very broadly, we would want our employees to understand what may be a FOIA so they can help forward that. The second level would be at each department, working with each department to make sure they have a designated internal contact that has a more enhanced level of understanding of what they're required to produce and what constitutes a FOIA and what sort of responsive documents may be available. So that's going to be one or two individuals in each department across the city. And then the more detailed level, the highest level of training would be for actual FOIA officers that are responsible for reviewing the documents and preparing the responses. And that would be very, very detailed training and ongoing as new decisions come from the Attorney General, as new practices roll out, as new court cases are decided, an ongoing process of providing a very high level of training for those individuals.
Also, and City Manager Gora, I'll direct this question to you. Do you have any idea of the percentage of FOIA requests that fall in the category of there isn't a separate, you know, just one discrete document? It involves, you know, researching many sources and many sources, which I understand are not necessarily accessible.
I'll start the answer, and then I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney, which you'll understand in a second. The ones that we receive from the police department, as I understand, as City Attorney says, are more simple requests. It might be a particular report. It's the ones that come in to the City Hall that are sometimes the more complicated ones. And I'm going to ask Attorney Frieders to comment on that because many times staff, he is working with staff in order to compile that information and work with the various departments. So I'm going to ask him to see if he can quantify that.
So I don't have a percentage distinction? So I don't have a percentage distinction to give you. I can tell you, though, that one of the things that we are doing and working to do is providing a public record of what the FOIA requests that the city receives are, what the nature of the inquiry is, and who the requester is. So that would be something that would be very evident from that practice. You could go through and look and see what the nature of the requests are. The other indirect answer would be that, as I had indicated earlier, a request for a tangible document of an accident report from the Police Department or a given ordinance, for example, the amount of time that it takes to comply with that request is very significantly less than the amount it takes to comply with a very broad request. So regardless of the percentages, I think it's fair to say that with regard to those FOIs received here at City Hall, more time is likely expended on the broader-based ones than the targeted specific document requests.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, as I say, this item will be contained in our regular meeting this evening, coming back to us. With that, I appreciate the presentation this evening. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve holding an executive session to discuss the purchase.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Speakers?
Mayor, public participation.
Thank you. Thank you. And I apologize, I've got them right here in front of me. Ms. DeHajiechik?
Good evening, Ms. De.
Good evening. I just wanted to pass out something so that you have something to refer to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Ray, and members of the Committee of the Whole for allowing me to speak to you today. I come before you as a citizen, and I think this city policy and proper training on FOIA is long overdue. There's a lawsuit, and I'm going to read this so that I stay within my time, that the decision on the Association versus Illinois State Board of Education, the principal mandate of this act found in subsection 3A, which provides that, quote, "Each public body shall make available to any person for inspection or copying all public records," end quote. The remainder of this act implements these requests. Now, that's what we've been talking about. In your handbook, however, I find numerous statements that are wrong. The handbook, number two, says, "Public bodies can determine whether they will receive an oral FOIA request or not. The policy guide contemplates that the city would not accept oral FOIA requests, but rather offer requesters assistance in documenting their request in writing. I ask you, does this apply to an in-person request to inspect and copy documents as specified in ILCS 143C? Do those also have to be written?" Your handbook, in the third part, says, "This guide contemplates the potential for documents to be reviewed in person without charge." And you go on in your general notes to say, "If a person requests to inspect documents in person in lieu of receiving a copy, the city shall keep a complete copy of all responsive documents inspected," parentheses, "after redaction and exemptions are applied," parentheses, "and shall charge for all documents provided to the requester after inspection." That's a charge. You are saying both that it is free and there's a charge. The FOIA does not provide for a charge for inspection. In the handbook flow chart, you continually use the word reproduction. The word reproduction does not appear in the FOIA law, but rather the words copy and copying. Are you rewriting the law? In regards to the city emails, the handbook states, "Prospectively, it is proposed to include a statement at the bottom of all outgoing city emails in a format provided by the city manager. The format is presently contemplated to be as follows. This is a transmission from the City of DeKalb that is confidential and proprietary. If you are not the intended recipient, copying or distributing the contents of this message is expressly prohibited. If you have received this message in error, please destroy it and notify the city immediately." But 5ILCS 141.2 says, quote, "Presumption: All records in the custody of a public body are presumed to be open to inspection and copying." All records. Any public body that asserts that a record is exempt from disclosure has the burden of proving by clear and convincing evidence that it is exempt," end quote. This is in opposition to both copyright laws, and it seems to threaten employees that would go against the whistleblower laws. This email is the property, it goes on to say, "This email is the property of the City of DeKalb, and the city reserves the right to retrieve and read any message created, sent, received, including the right to monitor messages of city employees or representatives at any time without notice." This, in essence, is also making every email copyrighted, and you can refer to my first statement about being open and transparent and what the FOIA is about. You continue by stating, "The Freedom of Information Act requests submitted electronically, requests submitted electronically shall only be accepted when submitted to FOIA of City of DeKalb for general purposes or the police and it gives their address." 5ILCS 140 allows for the Requester to make a FOIA request to any employee. That's what the law states. Now, finally, I urge you not to put this forward tonight, to take time to reconsider, because if I can find a few of these things out of order, then surely there must be others. And since I only have three minutes, I will save the rest of my comments for the regular City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael DeHajiechik?
I said, "Council," already most of everything I have, so if anybody wants a copy of what I have, I have additional copies. I just want to say one thing. The City Council, or really want to talk about the City Council having a responsibility to make sure that the legal counsel they're getting on this to be top-notch. I would suggest that you hire additional, especially the seven of you that are aldermen, lawyer to review some of this material, because this is very touchy and can get you guys into some serious issues. I mean, one of the examples is, is last year we were asking about college town partners. Well, Mr. Frieders denied for, I believe it was M., which was advice to the executive. It is very narrowly defined as the staff advice to the boss, okay? It's not anybody the mayor talks to is advice to the executive. I mean, that's ridiculous to say that anybody the mayor or the city manager talks to is considered covered by advice to the executive. It's a very narrow statute. The other thing I want to point out is that a lot of the time that we've been going through this, much of this is misdirection and sending us to one-year turnarounds to the PAC. I mean, it's very easy to say, "Well, let's throw any old exemption." I mean, I have one here where there was an exemption B., I believe, okay? Or C., it was C. C. is for private information, stuff that you probably don't want other people to know whether or not you have some sort of STD, some sort of illness that you don't want to pass on. Well, somebody's email address is not C. It's exemption B., okay? The name of that person is not exempted, only their email address, and that's held up in multiple court cases. So I think the City Council really needs to seriously look at this. If you're going to put a FOIA, have it reviewed, have the FOIA policy reviewed by an external counsel, and be serious about this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Other discussion from council? Okay. Anyone else in the public wishing to address the council in the Cow? Thank you. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to hold an executive session to discuss purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C5, and to discuss pending litigation, 5ILCS 120/2C11. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Here we go.
Yes.
Markford?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Data.
Okay, thank you. And our intent would be to reconvene close to our six o'clock starting hour.